The City of Eldridge, Iowa, City Council Meeting for Monday, December 16th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Yelsey.
Present.
Docree.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Campbell.
Present.
Blackwell.
Present.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Docree, second by Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Number four. Public comment. If now's the time, if there's anybody in the crowd that wants to say something about this on tonight's agenda or not on tonight's agenda, now is the time and I ask you to go up and use that microphone. There's a switch on top and state your name and your address, please.
I think I flipped it on. Give it a tap, see.
It's on. Good evening. My name is Lynn Snyder. I live at 110 West Pinehurst Drive and I'm a member of Pinehurst Convo's HOA. The people who maintain our lawns over there also maintain the detention pond, serving the HOA with the same degree of care. I do not understand why HOA members should incur any additional charges or expense if the city is going to maintain the detention pond. In my view, you're fixing something that isn't broken. That pond looks great, just like our lawns do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Now's the time. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Connie Shannon. I live at 125 West Pinehurst Drive and I'm on the board with Lynn. And about the retention ponds. So we can't really make a decision until we figure out what you guys are going to do. So the question is, how much would it cost each homeowner in the taxes? And whatever that is, the question is, will that be adjusted annually based on the amount of homeowners at that year? Because we're growing so fast. So these are just some questions for consideration. Big one is, if we keep our retention pond and we continue to maintain it, but other neighborhoods turn theirs over to the city, will we still get taxed? That's a big one. Then basically, I just have one suggestion. And that is that if... How about this idea that families or groups might take on a detention pond to be able to maintain it in exchange for a tax write-off or a tax cut? It's similar to what they do on the highways and the county roads and that kind of stuff, where somebody takes over maintaining it and cleaning it up and that kind of stuff. We're pretty proud of the one we have, but only because we're particular about how it looks. So we're concerned that if the city takes it over, then, you know, would it be lacking in how it's cared for? And would that then lower our value of our property? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Torres Manson. I live at 118 West Pinehurst. And I want to express support for transition of the retention ponds from the HOAs to the city. And I base that on two things. One is that I believe that the ponds serve more than just the homes in the HOA. So other homeowners should bear some of the burden of the pond. And also, I don't believe the HOAs are exactly knowledgeable on what is required to maintain the ponds. I don't know. I haven't had a class in Pond Retention 101. So I don't know if we need to be checking drains or whatever. So that's why I'm thinking it should be transitioned to the city, where they hopefully, you all, would have knowledge of that. I do have one, well, I may have more concerns, but one major concern that I'd like to express. And basically Lynn and Connie mentioned it. And that is, how will the ponds be maintained when the city does take them over? As was mentioned, we are very particular about ours. And if you go down First Street and turn west on Pinehurst, you'll see the 22 Villas in our HOA. And as you drive down the street, you may not have even noticed the pond because it's actually smack dab in the middle of the HOAs. And it is so well-maintained. The entire lot is grass. It's mowed regularly. It's on a weed and feed program. And so it's very well-maintained because the fourth and the fifth villa are right there on each side of it. I mean, they look out their window and right there is the pond. So we're very proud of the way it has been maintained. And so I would ask that if indeed the city takes over, that they maintain it to that same level of care. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council now?
Hello, thank you. My name is Mike Latcher. I live out on Lowell Moore by the sheriff's station on Black Hawk Trail. And we have a retention pond there, which we've been approached by Mahadavia. They are flat out just saying, boom, we're going to quit claiming deedless to you guys. And we're going, we don't want it. Because our streets and the Black Hawk Trails, the high-rise out there, the sheriff's station and the storage units dump into the same thing. And they're coming to us. We've got to go to court. We have to pay out of our HOA to go to court for this. And I asked the lawyer, I said, what can we do to get our money back when, if we're successful in this whole deal and there's nothing? And it's kind of like, you've got to be kidding me. Quit claiming deedless. We don't want it. And they're throwing it right at us? They're forcing it on us? I don't get it. These retention ponds were required by who? By the city? Isn't that infrastructure? Isn't that infrastructure? You know, is it infrastructure to take off a load on the creeks that we're dumping into? Or even, I read an article where the retention pond, I think from these folks, are dumping into, down on Main Street there. And it helps relieve it. It helped it. I look at it as infrastructure. I don't get this. I just don't get this, people. You know, I mean, why would we, in third edition? Or second? We'd be responsible for that when there's four of us dumping into this thing. I don't get it. We're going to lose money on this whole deal because we've got to go to court on this. But it is what it is. I just lose faith.
Hi, Marilyn Robson from his same association. And I really didn't plan on speaking, but we had talked to our lawnmower if he would mow this retention pond. And he said, no, because the sides are way too steep for just a lawnmower. We need something a little bit bigger to take care of that. And again, why should we be the sole owners of it when there's others that are dumping into it? It's just, we'd be more than happy to pay the tax. And I'm sure the city would take care of it however they feel it should be maintained. So that's what I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Thank you for reminding me. My name is Joy Sherwood. I live at 206 West Valley Drive. 326, I'm sorry. I get nervous. So I'm talking about the business of the school by in the, what was the churchyard in back of us? And I'm going to put housing in there. And when we all started talking about this at meetings and stuff, it was mentioned several times by council people that in 2011 is when it was decided by that planning and zoning committee that it's going to be coded R1 and R2. And we have to obey by that. We have to go by that. We have to honor that. And I agree. So why is it that we have to do R3 and put multifamily housing in there? And I don't think we should if we want to honor what the 2011 Planning and Zoning Committee decided. So, and R2 goes for duplexes, two-family housing. So why not do that? Leave some spaces in between these. And then there's only four of those, four of the 16 housing units, that is going to be school-built. The school spent all this money on that property to have students build houses. Because in the town of Eldridge, they're running out of property, running out of bike lots to build on. That are close to the school, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that. But they're only building four and they build one a year. Where are they going to be after four years? Does it make sense to go through all of this, upset the people around there, who are taxpayers too, and to do a just four-year solution to the problem? And then there's a problem with everybody paying for an HOA to maintain the detention pond. I think that only the new housing should have to do that. We didn't need a detention pond when it was the other ones. I mean, just us homeowners that have been there for years and years. And some of them don't live, haven't lived there for years and years, but the house has been there. So I think, like I say, I think just the new housing should have to pay HOA for that. And let's see, what was the other thing? Oh, yes. The four... Really? I've never talked that long in my life.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council now? Now's your time for a public comment. Okay. Moving on to 5A. Consideration to approve the regular city council minutes from the city council meeting on December 2nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Yelsey, second by Collins to approve the regular council minutes from the December 2nd, 2024 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. 5B. Consideration to approve the Joint City Council and Community Center Board Minutes from the December 2nd, 2024 special meeting.
I'll make motion here.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Campbell to approve the special city council Joint Community Center Board meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. 5C. Consideration to approve the bills payable. Does anybody have any questions on the bills this evening? Mayor? Jeff? Peyton?
Your Honor, I just asked for clarification on for yard waste, if they bill annually or semi-annually? Because we have the bill for $6,100 in there. Hopefully it's an annual bid.
To Martin's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Marty's going to get back to me. One of the two.
Okay. All right. Well, with that being said then, do you hear a motion to approve the bills payable?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Collins to approve the bills payable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. 6A. Consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2024-15, rezoning 206 and 208 South Fifth Street to R3 multifamily residential with a planned residential overlay. Jeff, can I call on you?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. Just to make one clarification. When Joy was at the microphone, she said that the comprehensive plan from 2011 said that this was supposed to be R1 and R2. It's currently zoned R1 and R2. The comprehensive plan said that it was supposed to be high-density residential. So that's the issue that we're discussing and why we're discussing it. The point is that it was supposed to be high-density residential. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Otherwise, I haven't received any new comments other than the endorsement from the Quad City Chamber of Commerce in support of the development that I emailed to you today.
Thank you, Jeff. Council, do you have any other questions?
Just for the record, is anybody from Quad City Chamber here tonight?
I don't think so.
I don't think they understand that Eldridge in general builds as many houses as the entire Rock Island County. So I feel a little offended. They supported that letter telling us we need more growth.
I believe they're saying that the Quad Cities in general, not Eldridge specifically.
And Mayor, it's my understanding that the school is working with engineering and the developer possibly making further changes or admitting that to have maybe a couple more houses in there to appease the neighbors around there. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it. They're looking at that right now to possibly remove one of the town homes and look at possibly a couple more homes. But they're going to wait to hear back from their engineers.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance 2024-15, rezoning 206 and 208 South Fifth Street to R3 multifamily residential with planned residential overlay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Yelsey, second by Campbell to approve the second reading of ordinance 2024-15. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Docree.
Nay.
Yelsey.
Aye. The second reading of ordinance 2024-15, rezoning 206 and 208 South Fifth Street to R3 multifamily residential with planned overlay passes. 6B. Discussion and review of the policies related to the responsibility and maintenance of detention ponds throughout the city. This is the first time the council has had some information in front of them. I just thought I'd let you people know that we're concerned about your ponds. This is an issue the city is looking into. Assistant Administrator Jeff Martin says did a lot of work the last three weeks and provided a nice packet on this. And I'm actually going to call on you now, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify a couple of things that were said during public comment. Mike talked about the sheriff's department and the storage draining into the Black Hawk Hills detention pond. Actually, the sheriff's department and the storage units have their own detention ponds that contain water. Not to say that some of that doesn't make its way downstream into that, but they do have their own detention ponds. On the plat and in the covenants, I believe there's language in there referring to the homeowners association taking over that pond. I understand that that didn't happen similarly to the Pinehurst and Fifth Street detention pond. But the paperwork that I've seen does mention that. But now get on to the memo. Just to summarize, I sent you earlier a packet on Bettendorf and then on Davenport. Both the Davenport and Bettendorf currently have stormwater utility fees for all residents, commercial and industrial properties. They currently don't maintain any of those detention ponds on a regular basis, unless they own them for some reason. There is apparently a handful of ponds that both of those cities own that they came to acquire for some reason or another over the years. Obviously, they have a lot more detention ponds than Eldridge does. They don't plan to take ownership of any existing detention ponds. And the only ponds Bettendorf would consider taking ownership are of our pre-planned residential detention ponds. And Davenport has a program that, there's an application process. And they would consider taking ownership if there was a clear public use or benefit. Otherwise, they would not. That's a summary of those. The staff has determined there's kind of two immediate needs that we have to take a look at while you guys, you know, decide what the policy is going to be doing going forward, whether you'd like a stormwater utility fee or not, and whether you would like the city to maintain any of those ponds or not. One of those immediate needs is, we still have that resolution 0431 out there from 2004 that defined a fee structure that was never implemented for the regional detention pond that we do have. So it makes sense if you're heading towards implementing a stormwater fee that we maybe look at repealing that at some point if we're going to truly take over the maintenance of ponds. If we're not going to take over the maintenance of ponds, we still need to take a look at that resolution to, you know, see what we need to do with it because it is still there. And then also an immediate need is, the wording is confusing in the enforcement section of the current ordinance. Hopefully, this will be resolved before April when maintenance has to start occurring. If it's not, the current ordinance doesn't really give us any enforcement ability moving forward. So there were some proposed changes to that ordinance that were in your packet. If you would like to make those changes, I could have an ordinance presented at the next council meeting. That would take three readings and a publication. So we'd still be towards the end of February before that got finished. We had some talk today that possibly the dissolved business entity portion of that should be removed. But I will leave that to you gentlemen to discuss. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, if there are any.
For clarification, you mentioned a minute ago that it's common and you were talking about their plat, that this is normal language that you see. Is that across the board, your experience is that most of these homeowners associations are supposed to assume ownership of detention ponds at some point once the development's done? Or do you see a mix?
No, the documents that I reviewed have said that the homeowners association is supposed to take possession and the homeowners association covenants say that they're supposed to maintain them. You know, whether that, like, we've got a couple of situations where that happened. We've got some situations where, for some reason, in Stone Brook, an LLC has remained the owner of those, but they, the residents still submit an annual fee to the owner and the owner does use that for maintenance and they are well-maintained. But they were never turned over to homeowners association. There was recently a parcel split. And the reason for that, we were told, was because the homeowner, the owner of the LLC was going to turn that over to homeowners association. But now that all this talk has started, you know, I don't know if that's still the case or not.
Jeff, first of all, thanks for all the research on, for some of the newer guys. Normally, the developer owns those until the subdivision gets 80% built out. And then the homeowners association is supposed to do that. Some of the problems we have is, okay, what if the homeowners association didn't take it? The developers' LLCs dissolved. Taxes aren't being paid on it. It's going to get auctioned off down the courthouse steps. The question is, is why are we going to end up with some of those anyways? The other thing is homeowners association, if you don't refile them to renew them every 20 years, they're dissolved. So there's a lot of things in this. Over in Illinois, they charge, and I think one of Jeff's memos said that, by square footage of impervious soil on your property. I know some people over there that have farm ground within the city limits and they charge them stormwater fee even though the farm ground's right adjacent to the river. That's crazy. We heard earlier tonight, we have some people that want to maintain their own and some people that don't. There's not a smooth transition on this. You know, do we look at treatment like a weed ordinance? If they're not maintained, the city does it and then assesses the homeowners? One thing we should probably do is do a poll on different homeowners association, what fee they're charged for those areas. You know, I don't know if it's $2 or $5 a month or what it is on an annual basis. But some of those things we're going to have to look through. But typically, the homeowners association, anybody that's bought a house in the last 10 years in Eldridge has probably signed a document saying they agree to join and do responsibility for that. But how many people are closing their, just initial sign, initial sign, don't have any idea what's in the documents? Is that the city's fault? To me, no. But we've got this albatross. Now we've got to figure out a solution.
And like Brian said, Jeff, thanks for the late night reading. It was interesting and informative. And I agree with Brian. I mean, we're stuck with this. And it's not just us. I mean, it's everywhere. It's the information you gave us. It's all across the state and all across the country. And we're just one small city that's kind of leading the way right now, it seems like. I feel for everybody. But I'm kind of thinking along the lines of the stormwater fee. We've kind of thrown that around today a little bit, you know, for everybody to do that. You don't have much information on that. Do you have, we have to get a lot of stuff, correct?
I wouldn't arbitrarily just assign a number to it without doing some further research, I don't think. I wouldn't recommend that. We know that Davenport charges $3.60 per residential property monthly for stormwater. They don't do any maintenance on those ponds. They use that money for curb and gutter, storm sewer replacement, you know, all kinds of other stormwater-related stuff. To answer another question, I know that Mike said earlier, like, who mandated this? This came to us from the state. When we got to, I think, 5,000 population, we had become an MS4 community. And then we're mandated to do this stormwater stuff then from that point on. So it's passed on to us, you know, and we have to require it and have a plan. And again, like Scott said, this isn't an Eldridge problem. This is a nationwide problem. One of the emails in your packet, I think, was from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, something like that. So this is all across the country. People are having these issues. But if you'd like to have a fee, even though the older neighborhoods don't have detention, that water's going somewhere. It's going along the curb and gutter. It's going into storm sewers. As we can see now, we're replacing, resurfacing 7th and 8th Street. We know that a lot of that curb and gutter is bad. So that's having to be replaced. We're going to have to replace some storm sewer in there. So the older neighborhoods are more likely to need that type of infrastructure update. While the newer neighborhoods have new curb and gutter and storm sewer, but they've got the detention ponds. So even the older neighborhoods have a need for some type of stormwater repair that a utility fee could be used for if you, you know, chose to have a utility fee.
Something in this process too. If we do take the route of assessing a fee, monthly fee, we're going to have to establish another enterprise fund or combine it with our sanitary sewer because it will be a fee for services. It had to be itemized and kept totally separate from our general running funds. It had to be itemized and kept totally separate from our general running funds.
I guess I would recommend that we talk to the Public Works Director. We would have approximately 13 of these ponds if we were to maintain them all and get an estimate from him on what it's going to take, whether he thinks we need a full-time staff member, whether you just hire a part-time guy in the summer, if we need any additional equipment. And then I think we need to talk to the city engineer and get an estimate on projected stormwater repair costs over the next five years so we could, you know, mathematically try to figure out, you know, what the fee would cost. You know, Bettendorf has a complicated system. The minimum fee would be $5.80, but it goes up from there, you know, even as much as $30 for a large acre to residential property. And they admitted that their fee is very high. But again, they're not using that to maintain detention ponds, they're using that money to actually repair, you know, stormwater and storm sewer maintenance.
I think all that information, Jeff, would be beneficial in addition to what Brian mentioned earlier about maybe getting what some of the HOAs are paying. I think that would be a tool we do want to have. And then also just projected revenue from different stormwater fees that we might charge and, you know, how much money that would bring in over the year and then we could adjust and talk about that.
Scott, you know me and numbers. If it's $4 a month, we have 1,500 residents, 12 months, it'd be about $74,000 annually.
I trust you and I'd rather have...
I did a, so, so I was looking into that also. When you Google the number of households in Eldridge, Google says there's 2,580 land households. When I had Sadie tell me how many billing accounts we have in our computer, we've got 3,536. But some of those would be duplicates because you've got some landowner, you know, and some resident, and some rental, you know, accounts that would overlap. So somewhere in the middle of those two numbers, you know, is where we're going to come out. We have ways to find out, it's just we're going to have to talk to our service provider to see how we can kind of separate some of this out.
I wasn't by any means saying there's 1,500 homeowners. I'm just using that as an example.
Right, yeah.
As an example.
You bet.
Jeff, one thing that stood out, with all that information you sent us, and I understand all the challenges that we're facing with the fees and who's going to maintain those, but one thing that stood out with all that information you sent today was the ownership part of it. And, you know, originally, we were talking that the city would essentially take quick claim deed and take ownership of this, but you're seeing, not just across the state, but the general consensus out there is that municipalities are not wanting to take ownership. They're maintaining those, they're taking care of those for those homeowners, but the ownership of that detention pond remains within those homeowners associations. So that's something that we definitely have to take in consideration due to the risk and liability that comes with owning that land. And then, you know, that next step is then you have people with homeowners associations that are somewhat defunct, like you talked about, Brian, and then what do you do then? Or you've got a builder or developer that, that just closes shop and does what we've seen happen, then how do you handle those? So even, you know, in the perfect world, if we say we don't want to take ownership, Davenport has in some cases taken some ownership and so has Bettendorf, even if it's a small percentage, we need to have a, we need to have a path so that happens and we know what we're going to do with it.
I just recommend we've got a lot of ideas, we come back with more information. I'm really curious on what the different homeowners or PTOAs do pay on a monthly. Let's get all the information and put this on a future agenda to try to come up with more ideas.
One thing to consider too, you guys talked about how well-maintained your detention pond is, and I think part of that is because of the slopes a little bit different. So what it probably does, it takes up more land in order to get that quantity of water there. You know, that's something that if, if that's the desired effect, obviously, we've got 13 or so in town, if that's something to consider, then you change the shape of the detention pond so that you can maintain them to the quality that they do because the reality is, and I'll say it, is, is the way yours is maintained, when you turn that over to somebody else and you're taking care of 15 of them, it's not going to happen. I'm just being real, that that's not going to be something that's going to be maintained unless somebody is doing it on their own time, which is what happened on 5th Street and Pinehurst for several years. So, again, another, another thing to think about.
Right, I'm cautioning you on one thing there. Detention ponds, the area is calculated off the hydraulics of that neighborhood. So with our M4, we may not be able to change the slopes because it cuts down on capacity for whatever rainfall event they calculated that to mean. So I just don't want people to think that we can go in and do the side slopes, make it easier to maintain it. It depends on the initial calculation on that.
I do agree with the residents in Black Hawk Hills that that is the biggest, deepest, steepest pond that's in, in the city, is that pond.
And it's right next to the creek.
Yeah.
Right next to a creek.
Whatever route we go with this regarding fees and scales and charging, who, what, community members, I want to ensure that we're not necessarily proud scouting the residents, but I want to make sure that we are covering enough so we can properly maintain those. Just a few that look very nice, you know, I commend you and the lawn care service that does that, I feel as a city that we should try to duplicate as such and ensure that we have enough revenue that's going to pay either internally with our guys or privately that these are well-kept and maintained and ensure that we have enough to cover anything necessary for infrastructure underneath regarding tiling that may get busted, may get clogged, looking for the future, you know, of projects and growth as we have to possibly make modifications to certain areas. And I believe what Jeff said too, with a certain portion of that, to utilize and add for infrastructure repair. We have come across projects notoriously at Leclerc First and a portion of the downtown vein when that was being revamped as we started to dig a little bit deeper and we ran into concerns regarding infrastructure down there regarding piping caving in and, you know, being there for decades. So that added on, you know, to the expense that we weren't even aware of. So we want to make sure that we have enough money to cover everything necessary for the city and that we can properly maintain and attempt to control water so it's not a barrier or a hindrance to our community.
Some more research is needed for sure. I agree with everything that everyone has said today and we'll do a good job, but really, it's all of us that are in this. It's not just the new or the old sections of town because the new people have the detention ponds, the older people have the infrastructure that's failing now, so we all need to look to see what's going to be the best for all of us.
I just, Adrian made me remember, one more thing that I would like to add. In conversations with some of you and staff, this had come up, the city wouldn't necessarily have to be the ones to maintain them if we had a stormwater utility fee. We've got approximately five lawn maintenance companies in this, within the city limits. There's nothing that says that we can contract it out and have some of these same companies that are doing the care now, you know, continue to do that and just use the stormwater utility fee to pay for that. If that would be a cheaper option than hiring a full-time staff member, paying benefits, you know, that type of thing. Just wanted to throw that out there on the table that that had been discussed because I forgot to mention it.
So counsel, what we have in front of us here is to get some more information, but, you know, something Ryan brought up, the discount is doing pretty good to keep things moving forward. So what do you think, like, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, bring this back around and give them, the staff, time to get a little bit more information and maybe Jeff from Nevada, would the utility clerks be able to see which homeowners associations we have on the books to see who the contact person would be to try to, try to get some of those amounts that they're currently paying?
Yeah, and I've got some contact information for some of them that I can reach out to. And I could, I mean, it's possible I have that information by next meeting, especially if we push it back a week like we're talking about.
The 13th of January?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should put it on the agenda for January 13th.
Your Honor, I was going to say, let's have it finalized by the second meeting in March. There's not going to be any maintenance done on the ponds between now and then anyways. Let's set a deadline to have it finalized, but second regular council meeting in March. So that gives us some time to get all the details we need instead of, you know, I want to get it done, but I don't want to rush through it either.
Jeff, can you still maybe give us an update by that January meeting then?
Sure. Yeah, and we probably want to weigh in with the city attorney on some of this stuff too. We haven't done that yet.
Right, and like you said, probably get the engineer involved too. Okay. All right, I think that's enough for that. We'll move on to 7A. Consideration to approve setting 2025 year city council meeting dates. Nevada, can I call on you for that?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll cover both of the next two items, just going through one discussion. So looking at the city council proposed dates, most of the months are just going to fall on your routine first and third Monday of the month. The two exceptions we would be looking at would be January. The first meeting in January, we've already confirmed that at least two of the council members would be absent and we do have a third reading that will be coming forward for an ordinance. So, and the 13th of January, sorry, the 20th of January is a holiday, so that week, if we were to hold it on that third week, we would have to do the Tuesday. So looking at those obstacles for January, the proposal is to go with the second and fourth, which would be the January 13th and January 12, 27th date that are proposed on the resolution. Then September would be the other month that we would be looking at switching that first and third to, I believe that's the second and fourth as well. September 1st is a holiday, which would again put us at the second, or, I'm sorry, Tuesday of that first week. So we are looking at proposing the second and fourth Monday for September being the 8th and the 22nd for 2025. And then the committee of the whole to go with those on the first Monday council meeting of each month for that year.
I make a motion to approve that as precedent.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Green, second by Campbell, to approve. Can we approve this as one? No, okay, so we'll do them separate. So are you, are you making the motion to approve the regular dates?
The regular council dates.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it. Yes.
I make a motion to approve committee of the whole date as precedent.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Green, second by Blackwell to approve committee of all meetings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it. 7C. Consideration to approve appropriating the remaining ARPA funds in an amount of $22,048. Nevada, can I call on you for this?
Thank you, Mayor. Just coming back to the ARPA funds, we've talked about the fund balance that's left here and I've got some sheets coming around to the council members for a potential additional project to appropriate those funds by the end of the year. So far, we've spent the ARPA funds on the PD equipment, being the body and squat can and tasers, the land purchase, an additional $5,000 for the closing cost with that purchase, a new phone system for the organization, and then some office desks and chairs. The other project that was approved, the last time we talked about ARPA funds, was doing something with South 1st Street for a safety crossing or some sort of enhancement based on what would come back from our TEEP study that's being done by SHI through Iowa DOT. That report is not going to be out until January and we need to have the funds committed to a contract proposal or agreement by the end of 2024. So we've got about two weeks left to commit the remaining funds. We have a balance of about $22,000 remaining that's not yet committed to the project. One thing that's come up from some residents, staff and elected officials over the past year and a half to two years is our website being a little bit outdated and having some comments about it being user-friendly, taking multiple clicks to get to where you're going and not necessarily being able to find things. So we've talked a few times about looking at updating our website. So I've put a proposal in front of you for spending that remaining $22,000 and contracting with a vendor to update our website design and content. So our current host is through Wix and the only charge that we currently have is about $411 a year. We maintain it daily, but in this research, we did find that we are not compliant in some areas with our website that public agencies or government agencies would need to be for our accessibility, our privacy and a secure host environment. So one of the vendors we looked at was De novo Marketing, which is sponsored by Iowa League of Cities, is one of the top marketing, they do a lot of municipal websites. They did have the highest fee for the project fee at $50,000 with an ongoing yearly fee option of $3,900 a year to do hosting, maintenance and updates. They would ensure that we are compliant with all of the federal and state regulations that we need to be in compliance with for a government website. They would also review and optimize the current content we have on the website and they would develop brand icons. So basically, it would be a rebranding based on, they would come and speak to all of the department heads, all of the teams and do a rebranding of our city logo and all of our content and get everything to have one consistent look and messaging across all of our websites. That project would take about five to seven months to complete. The Zoke Marketing, they were partnered with Wix as one of the options. Their project fee was $5,549 with a yearly option of either $1,600 or $2,100 for that hosting fee, depending on what option we went with. However, they did, were not able to confirm that we would have that accessibility and that privacy and that secure host website, that we would be in compliance with that. And then we looked at Civic Plus, that's a vendor that we already use for our social media archiving and we are looking at them for some other platforms as well. They have a project fee of $1,000 with a yearly fee option for the hosting and maintenance of either $4,500 or $5,100, depending on if we would look at the premium or ultimate option for our website. So they take the content that we already have and they either put it into a general template that they've created or they can customize it for us, but they don't do anything additional with the content that we have, they don't do any branding. Looking at the amount of money that we have left and then also looking to get some contribution from the utility and our sewer fund and the other, the other funds that would be benefiting from the website. Moving forward with De novo would give us the best product for the money and would expend the rest of the funds on that project. It also has a lower cost going forward for hosting and maintenance and it does confirm that we will, it will maintain our site compliance under the regulations and standards. Civic Plus, I think, would also upgrade where we are currently at with our website, but we would be looking at going through and reviewing all of our own content and making additions and so we might not get quite the optimized experience that we would get with De novo. It would still be an upgrade from where, where we're at, but my recommendation is with the money that we have left with ARPA and the product that we would get as a result and then also looking at the ongoing annual fees, I think De novo would be a good consideration for the council to discuss.
I think you said that the annual fee for the Civic would be the $4,500 and the $5,100, but those are monthly fees, weren't they?
That's yearly. For Civic Plus, it would be $4,500 a year or $5,100 a year.
Okay.
Yep, for the hosting maintenance.
Okay.
So when you first sent this out, honestly, I was a little bit shell-shocked when I saw the difference in pricing, so I emailed you right away because one of them seems high, the other one seemed extremely too low, and of course, since then, we've, we've got another couple vendors on there. But since you sent out the other additional information, I got on each one of those sites in different multiple cities for each one that they, they represent, and there was a vast difference. I mean, it was, it was huge, and I look at, well, we know what we're getting with Wix, and people definitely aren't happy with that, nor am I. ZOK marketing, I was not impressed at all. They didn't have anything even related to municipalities, plus they don't meet any of our minimum requirements. So it was down for me between De Nova and Civic Plus, and I guess my, my final thoughts were Civic Plus seemed to do the job. It is definitely better than what we have, but it checked the minimum boxes. It appeared to be more like a landing page, meaning it was not very interactive, it was just a page that popped up, and then you had to self-click through the different boxes on there. De Nova was, was very impressive. It was state-of-the-art, it was something that, I don't know how we would outgrow that, so again, I go back to the cost. The initial costs are what is startling, but then the, the annual maintenance fees are considerably better for De Nova, and with what we've had, what we've, we will be jumping up to Civic, in my opinion, as a temporary fix, and whether that temporary fix is for ten years or fifteen years, I think we would still outgrow it. After the more and more pages I looked at, I would be in favor of, of initially trying to talk with De Nova and go on that route first, but I would have conversation with them is, is at that price tag, is that negotiable? And if it is, what options do we have? But the interactive part of that, I think, would be user-friendly for even people that are not computer literate. So that's, that's my two cents worth.
I would agree with you, Ryan. I looked at a lot of the sites that these people put together. I mean, if we have twenty-two thousand, we're halfway there for the fifty, and if we can get the utility board to, to kick in some money, that's really good. As we have all heard, the complaints, you know, we're, we're no longer a town of four thousand, we're almost seven thousand people, we're a big city, you know, we're one of the, we're getting to be a big player now, and I think we need to act like a big player. I think we need to have some really good stuff out there. I think that De Nova would do that, and so I would, I would go with that recommendation as well.
I'll be odd man out again. Forty-nine thousand dollars difference? I mean, did we set off to upgrade our website, or did we set off to rebrand the city? My opinion, if we set off to upgrade the website, I can't handle, even if utility board or anybody else throws money into it, a forty-nine thousand dollar difference. You know, I, I just don't, because we have twenty-two thousand dollars left in the ARPA funds, say we're gonna throw at this and resolve that issue? There's other things we can do with that balance. Now, we're running out of time, but if we can do a website to get us by ten years, technology's gonna change, and ten years after that, we'll probably be doing it again. But can you literally justify an additional forty-nine thousand dollars? Now, will that De, De Nova do anything just our website? Do we need the rebranding of the community? Their first, they turned me off when I read all the information. The first nine pages of that document they sent us was just of their employees. You know, it's about them. We don't need a high-powered PR firm to come in and rebrand us, we just need to upgrade our website.
De Nova takes the time and they input the information for you, right? As opposed to Civic, we would be doing it ourselves? Or to a degree?
To, yeah. So they come in and they review all of our content and look for areas that we can improve, add more content, things that may be out of compliance, and optimize everything that's on the website, and make recommendations for what else we can put in there. Automate the, our forms and documents, things like that. Civic Plus is gonna work with the content that's already there, they're just going to move it around, give it a different template, make it a little easier to get to, add some dropdowns, but that's about the extent of what they're going to do. I mean, they'll give a little bit of a, an update to the look of the website, but it's gonna be within or very close to their template.
Thank you.
If I heard correctly, you had mentioned too regarding maybe rebranding the city logo, is that correct? Is that something that their expertise would take a look at? Look at alternative to the water tower, hometown with division logo?
Um, so they do, they would do some, some rebranding based on the direction that, given by staff and elected officials, whether that's rebranding the logo completely, if that's something that we wanted, they could certainly do that based on what they learn when they come and talk to the staff. They could just kind of update our logo and give it a fresh look, or they could brand based on our logo. I mean, we, we would drive what that rebranding kind of would look like, but what the purpose of rebranding would be, be not to necessarily change our, our logo or what our logo currently represents, but to make it consistent across all of our websites, including the PD and the community center, which are all kind of siloed right now. Give a consistent look for font and letterhead and all of the things that go with that to match that website and to match the brand of the city on all of our communication that we put out to the citizens.
There was quite a bit of discussion when we looked at the new logo and transitioning from the old one and trying to keep with our vision, the hometown, with, with the vision. And, you know, councilperson or persons felt that we shouldn't put a business on their taxable entity for representation. The others too were kind of baffled, that's why we chose a water tower as well. So maybe there's still a discussion with that. We kind of went back and forth with that, something, wasn't it classy, something moderate with that, so. So, so there was time put into that, so I don't know if the current council, you know, but if we do pay fifty thousand dollars, then I would entertain looking at that as they move forward. We're looking at the proposal that was sent out too, it was somewhat confusing. I would say we'll go through it and look at it in a little more detail, and I believe that, that is a greater bang for your, for your buck. It may take all access work for the administration too. Do you have their expertise there? And it appears to be in the long run that we may possibly save money with, with annual fees. It'd be nice to see if it is negotiable though, too. If I did not get opportunity to look at all every other municipality, as Councilman Yossi Vito, the ones I've seen, they were, they were sharp. They were so fairly easy to navigate, I felt too, so. So I just wanna keep that in motion, you know, with that, with the time that was spent on the logo. With that, I mean, we open it up to community members too, I don't know if we wanna go that route again with input, whatever, but I guess we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. This was just changed within the last decade to rebrand it again, it's, oh, it's worthwhile to be sold.
I agree that our website is old and very hard to use, very hard to go around, so I'm, I'm in favor of changing the website, but there has to be a different fee than fifty thousand. I really do believe that, you know, they can do half now, and if we're happy with it, and we, and, you know, the residents of Elders can use the website better, and they can look at things easier and look up things easier for questions on multiple things that they would go to our website for, I think that's money well spent. I do not feel that we need to change the logo right now at this time, but I'm, I'm in favor of doing at least the website at this time and then looking at it again in the future.
I'll finish it up since I started it, so kind of a circle back around with, with what you said, Brian, I get it. That's why when I first looked at it, shell-shocked, fifty thousand dollars. But, and again, I didn't dive in it for hours, but I noticed huge differences. So my, my final take on this would be, let's, let's dig in more, let's define the differences. But not, not only the cost of setting up, what it's gonna cost our staff on top of meeting with their staff at both companies, but what, what other takeaways do we have? We're not just paying fifty thousand dollars to build a website, there's, there's gotta be something we're missing, because if you look at the websites, the interactive part of it is much simpler, and, and those are the questions I would like to know. Tell it. Tell us, why are you worth this amount more? Make them point everything out, make them, make them sell it to us. And then I would ask the same thing, once you get those, those answers from De Nova, then I would go back to Civic Plus. Let's find out, because there is a chance that there could be key things that we're missing, or we could realize that we don't need those certain things, or we could realize that we're gonna have costs outside of that, that project fee that we're gonna incur as a city, and maybe it's not so far apart. I don't know those answers, all I'm saying is in comparison, I know that having the most user-friendly website is best for the community, and maybe it's right, maybe it's wrong, but I think we need to dig into it more because there's a noticeable difference.
I think we need to stress to them, at least I personally, I'm not interested in rebranding the city. I'm just after the website. You know, and that fifty thousand is a tough pill to swallow for me, because I look at that and say, well, we can do the other one for a thousand, we've got twenty-two thousand in the remaining funds, we could hire Shai Hattery to do a study on all our detention bonds and the volume to see what it takes for the slope. You know, at fifty thousand, I just can't solve it.
Just coming back to, this is our last meeting for the year, so the next time we meet, we'll be past our deadline, that this has to be, it does not have to be the website, that's completely up to you guys, but I do need a commitment from the council tonight on the twenty-two thousand to have an authority to sign a contract or an agreement on a project for the twenty-two thousand. It has to all be contracted, not just appropriated by us to a project that we'll figure out and define later, it has to be written into a signed contract or agreement by December thirty-first of this year. So some level of approval of what, what we can do with that twenty-two thousand so that we have met the reporting and compliance requirements of the funding and don't have to return that money.
Nevada, is this something that we could come back to De Nova and say that we would like to put twenty-two thousand to our website, and then see what they would say? And we could make a motion tonight to approve that, if they would approve that at the twenty-two thousand then?
I can definitely go back and ask them anything that you guys want me to, but we will, we need to have a plan that if, we can't just mark the twenty-two thousand, then what, what do we put that twenty-two thousand for? What can, what agreement contract can be signed prior to the end of the year for this twenty-two thousand?
Shai Hattery studying our stormwater detention areas.
But then there's still a need for all of our residents, you know, our age, you know, we can do such and such on the website. My mother, you know, is, is an iPad user, you know, can she use that on our website? And then, you know, our kids under us and our grandkids, they have a whole different knowledge. So I, I see why she did this, and it's a great idea. I'm having a problem with the fifty thousand too, but I still believe in my heart that we still need to update our website to help all the residents here in town.
I don't disagree one bit, but the other one from Civic also says of upgrade it, meet us in compliance. My point is just merely, I don't wanna say to the city administrator, yeah, you can spend the twenty-two thousand on a thing, and then get other funds from utility and sewer fund, and here we are, spending fifty thousand dollars on a program without council's approval. You know, if they will do that, or see what it takes to take the branding out, you know, I think the city administrator needs latitude to cover that twenty-two thousand, but I don't want it to be a portion of the fifty thousand. If the thing is twenty-two thousand, so be it. If, if they won't come down and they're stuffing that fifty thousand number, I'm okay with spending a thousand dollars upgrading our thing or go Civic, Civic, and see if they can do, what more they can do for some money, then take the balance of those funds and commission Shai Hattery to do a study for some of those things that we talked about earlier. That's just information we're gonna gather.
Then I would also need approval from the council to ask Shai Hattery to put the agreement together, put it in front of me, and let me sign it before the council's been able to see it and approve it in the new year. It would be an agreement to expend all of these funds that I would have to sign prior to the council's team in approving that agreement with Shai Hattery.
I think what we're looking at too right now is we're only fifteen days, there's twenty, fifteen days left until twenty twenty-five. That doesn't need a lot of time for administration. I, I have ideas as well, you know, with the, I, I, I mean, this would benefit the whole community with this amount. I don't, I disagree with Councilman Docree with that. I mean, we, the main discussion tonight was with retention problems too. We have showroom levels out there that we did some work on. I'd love to see that upgraded too, the possibilities out there, especially with the van shell going, you know, we talked before about doing something with that. We don't know with DNR and what other states and federal regulations we have to do. So all this right now, I, I, I believe it's, it's good, it's a good idea. We probably should have started this a month ahead of time, knowing with different ideas of how to spend this money too. I mean, I, I look at it from a law enforcement capability too, you know, with needs that they have, which I proposed, you know, last time that we met. But as, as of right now, just with fifteen days, with us not getting back together with a special meeting, I believe that we are open-minded, give Nevada the capability to approach, so, local marketing, maybe Shai Hattery too, or anything else, but sounds like right now it has to be show ready, or just from a logistic standpoint, and a lot of stuff that we're talking about may not be show ready. So I, I'm open as a, as a, as a council person, giving you leeway moving forward with other ideas, we would have to get together a special meeting or, or do a, you know, do a Zoom or a voice, you know, with anything, with this short amount of time.
I think we need to remember too, that if we would go with Civic, we're gonna be paying eight to twelve thousand dollars a year or more down the road, you know? And this way, I mean, in my mind, and maybe I'm all wet, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we can get De Nova for twenty-two thousand dollars, and if utility board is willing to kick in roughly that amount too, we're gonna have a really good product, and it's not gonna cost the taxpayers anything in terms of getting a product that we all know that we need, and that we've heard citizens tell us that we need. If we go with Civic, we're gonna pay twelve thousand dollars more and basically have pretty much the template that they put out with everybody else and look somewhat like our own currently, I guess. I just don't understand why we don't spend the money to, to think big and do something good here.
Scott, just for clarification, I agree with the direction you're going, but those are annual host fees, those are not monthly.
Oh, sorry, but it'd still be, oh, gotcha, you're, you're out, my mistake.
That's, I was confused about that.
Yeah, okay. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to my original statement, is what we have is very, very much needing updating, and I know what it costs to even get started on building websites and, and doing things of such nature, I'm not an expert at it, but fifty-five hundred dollars, you're gonna get a fifty-five hundred dollar website. And at the end of the day, that does not go very far. Someone can prove me different, but again, fifty thousand's on the high side, what are we missing? What are they offering? But at fifty-five hundred dollars and then the fees being higher, I'm not a fan.
I agree with everything everyone's saying here. Brian, I, I first seen that, that amount too, I was a little shocked by that, but something the council probably can relate to when I tell you this, that is a lot of money, but we're currently not in compliance. How many frivolous lawsuits have been brought against this city for ninety? How many frivolous lawsuits have been brought against this city for not, not complying or challenging the way we do things? One lawsuit could be possibly more than the difference between these two. And we're getting guaranteed compliance with them. I looked at the pack that came out and looked at some of the stuff and I'm no expert in that. But I did agree that, uh, de novo looked a lot better. And it appears to be easier to navigate like what Dan said, probably over half of our community is fifty-five years old, older. And they probably would have a challenge to operate our current website to get to what they truly needed unless some other relative of the family helped them. So when you consider that they will guarantee compliance, it'll bring it up to current standards. And the monthly fee is about a thousand dollars less per month. And you divide it amongst the, the three different parties of the city involved. I think this is a cheap investment to bring forward and to guarantee no more frivolous lawsuits.
Am I reading this wrong? That I thought the difference in the annual host fees is eleven hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, you're reading it right.
He clarified that.
That's the way I read it.
And I agree. He was, I was wrong.
We agree.
So I still say we need a number from de novo, cut out all the rebranding. We just need a website. See what that is. You know, and if they won't come up to the fifty thousand, we go with a thousand dollars or whatever the next number we want to throw at that. Then we put the balance into something else.
Um, what does the council want that balance to go to so that we can obligate it with a contract in fourteen days? I just need direction from that. If we don't do that, then the money goes back to, we lose that money, we lose the money for, um, the funding. It has to be obligated and signed into a contract by the end of the year. So, um, one thing we do need, no matter what it is that we're spending it on, we need to know what the authority is for the staff to commit that money to by December thirty-first, because we won't have a chance to come back together again and, and get an approval on a, a new project.
Nevada, I mean, you're right. Um, a couple of different possibilities we talked earlier, but it's the stormwater detention. Or we have Shy do, uh, analysis of our older part of the town, the stormwater piping. Uh, we're going to need that information to come back at some point, um, what's the number going to be if we do enter into a, a fee structure for stormwater? So it's not money lost by anything's, I mean, at some point in time, the taxpayers are going to have to pay for that study.
I just meant money lost. If we don't have this money committed, this money we do have to give back. So we have to make sure, um, that with this time that we're able to get this project figured out. And if it doesn't work out, then we have to get a proposal from Shy. I've got to be able to have the authority to sign it without you seeing and approving it formally in an open public meeting before December thirty-first. So that's the guidance and direction that I have to have from the council. Whatever that project is, I need that authority voted on to spend that money so we don't lose it all.
Right, and we just have to enter into a contract. We don't have to expend the funds to the end of twenty-twenty-five.
We have to enter into a contract that appropriates the funds, even if we don't pay it until next year. But the contract has to express the amount of funds that we're putting towards the project and it has to be a signed agreement.
I would say if they'll come down on that fifty thousand price to twenty-two, go with it.
Without rebranding, just doing the website for twenty-two?
Just the website, good top-notch website. If not, go with one of the other ones and then take the balance to Shy, whether you feel more, uh, appropriate to do detention, underground stormwater pipes, uh, get that evaluation done, because that's information we're going to have to take for sooner or later.
You, you said this was going to be split three ways or two ways? That's if the other utility and the other, how would this be split three ways?
Sewer. Separate from electrical water.
So if the council approves it for, um, for the website, the website is functional for all of the departments, including the enterprise fund. So the enterprise funds would have to contribute their portion. The ARPA funds have been allocated as general fund revenue lost. Um, we had an amount that was able to all be categorized to that. Um, so it's for the general fund. Um, but the, it's, the enterprise funds would still have to contribute their amount of funding for the new website. Um, if the council moves forward to approve that. So we would split it up the same way we do, um, any other services that are provided to the city that benefit all of, uh, those departments.
So, so we could make a, uh, a motion to approve on the city's behalf, that twenty-two thousand dollars. And forty-eight cents. And then if the other entities, sewer and utility get on board and that reduces that twenty-two thousand dollars, then we give, or we allow you to sign contract with Shy Hattery for the remaining to use towards stormwater. That would tie up both. Brian, you would have to be okay with her signing a contract without you looking at it? Are you okay with that? Honest question.
Hard answer. Um, if the council, I'm just going to vote, but if the council decides that, yeah, I'm okay with it. Now keep in mind, it's the, uh, sewer fund is us too. So it's.
So I'm going to make that motion for that twenty-two thousand and forty-eight cents to be used towards contracting de novo. With the intention that we go into this and, and again, have them break down their fee for services and see what we can negotiate for a lower fee. Or if, and if only we realize that the services that they offer are more than what we have discussed and what we expect and the other entities within the city will put in their portion, then we could pay up to whatever that cost is. But it's not going to exceed the twenty-two thousand and forty-eight cents on behalf of the city right now. Uh, any remaining funds, I would allow you to get a contract with Shy Hattery and put that towards stormwater studies. Brian, how would you like to, to state that?
Yes, just stormwater studies, whether it's, uh, aging infrastructure or detention area. Now, so to clarify that, you're saying if they'll come down to twenty-two thousand something to redesign our website?
What I'm saying is if they will come down to twenty-two thousand or if the number is greater than that, because there's something that we did not realize tonight in our discussions and that price is more and it can be justified. If it's a service that is beneficial to the city, I think that should be taken in consideration if you have other entities such as electric chipping in to increase that number above that twenty-two thousand dollars. I don't want to shortchange the city and say we can't get a product greater than twenty-two thousand dollars if it's something that's going to benefit the city.
Well, the electric is voted on by the utility board.
Correct.
Uh, I don't know when their next meeting is. But if we're taking things out of the sewer fund, guys, that's us too. So are we saying that the city's portion is twenty-two thousand total?
Twenty-two thousand and forty-eight cents.
And but including.
Not including this.
Well, then we could be back up there again. You know, because when we get through the budget, uh, you'll, you'll see all this, these numbers.
I, and I understand that. I've also seen what the budget in the past has got us and it's a website that you cannot use. That's what I think we're here to change and understanding that that might mean we have to change some things. And as uncomfortable as they can be, you're going to have to spend some money to make those changes. That's again, my opinion only.
And this website is our front door. I mean, to developers or whoever else is doing any kind of looking to come to Eldridge, they're going to our website. And if they see an antiquated website, we're going to look like a town of three or four thousand people. I mean, I think we need to put our best foot forward, I really do.
Scott, I agree, but I don't think fifty thousand is our best foot forward.
But if we do the research, if we kick in twenty thousand, if the utility board kicks in, I don't know, ten or twenty, if they come down to forty, I think it's a good deal. I mean, I think it's okay.
Something I just want you all to consider too, another thing that this council's been working on is we all are supporting future, future and current updated training for us all. And that is the Iowa League of Cities. Scott, me and you went to a class together. Um, that's recognized by all the cities and counties in the state of Iowa and helps on regulation at a state level. So just like when Jeff and Nevada recommend something to us, we have to judge, trust their judgment and go with their recommendations because they're, they're the administration of the city. Here we have the Iowa League of Cities, League of Cities recommended de novo as one of the better ones that they're recommending. And we're currently going to those classes, all of us, and getting updated on classes. So I just want you all to remember that too, that that's something we as a city and a council decide to go forward and, and do these classes to further our, uh, schooling and knowledge on how to run the city in a better, more efficient way. And here this, this Iowa League of Cities is recommending de novo. I just want you to remember that.
No, and Iowa League of Cities is a good entity. We've been part of them for a long time. De novo is probably a member of the Iowa League of Cities. You know, that's why, could be why they recommend, I'm not saying they're a bad company by any means. I'm just saying, tell me what it's going to cost.
Right.
Taking the rebranding out. Alls we want is a website.
I just want to clarify, there's, there's no, um, ask for them to do rebranding. When I say rebranding is when I'm looking through the documents that they've provided to us. They can use our logo that we've already created. We could ask them to create a new one if we wanted to, but that, that's all by us. But they can use our logo, our brand that we already have and make it consistent across all of our websites and all of our communications. Right now, if you were to look at our city website, our PD website, our community center website, they all look very, very different. They're not all branded the city of Eldridge, even though they're the city of Eldridge. Um, so it's not a rebranding of our logo or our icon or anything like that unless we ask it to be. But it is a branding across all of our communication to be consistent with the brand that we've chosen to use for the city. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that there was no ask for them to rebrand. Um, this is the proposal that they have to really dive into the content, what the city offers, what the city is looking for. Um, and what they come out and personally talk to the staff, um, and do that presentation. Um, and then make the website built to create and to get to the vision that you have for the city and to communicate that vision to the residents and to help achieve that vision. So it's, it's not a rebranding, um, task that they proposed. It's just part of the design of the website.
This would be so much easier if their price was down around thirty-five thousand. Bottom line. But it's not, it's at fifty right now.
Again, we have fifteen days left. It was really not a lot that we can really look at. I mean, we, we could, but to get something drawn up. So there's, there's a lot of stuff that we can, that, that we can do out there propose to, what they recreational pass in Iowa. Making roads though, you know, we have that, we have, sorry, that concern, get people off streets though. I'm okay, the price looks, I guess it, it, it does look outrageous. It's, it's, it was the study of what our administration's done so far, you know, unless they have time and want to go through with Shy and, and look at now on the stormwater, of multi-residential pathways connecting Iowa to school, Alphalekin and what that looks like and, and how we spin that. And with these funds too, are these funds, can these funds be used for just the preliminary studies? Or are they for the actual project as well? So I'm going to answer that one before we move forward, but we talked about this non-stop. I think we just go forward with what's been proposed to us. But if you could just shine light on that Nevada for everybody.
So it has to be committed to a project through an agreement. So if we were doing, um, a study or a proposal with our engineer for a project, then, um, we would be signed, that proposal would have a cost with it and we would be assigning those funds. It would have to cover that full twenty-two thousand. Like we couldn't do a proposal for five thousand, understanding that it's going to lead to a project that will expend these funds. It has to be committed in that agreement for the full twenty-two thousand. So, um, we need to know that Shy can put that proposal together and that we can get it in front of us and get it signed prior to December thirty-first. I know it's not ideal to be at the last meeting and not know, but this is where we're at. And we've had ARPA discussions every couple of months this year. Um, and we thought we had projects all figured out, but the First Street report isn't going to get to us before the end of the year. We don't know what we can put that twenty-two thousand for, um, for First Street, so that project isn't going to work. But we do have twenty-two thousand dollars that needs to be appropriated to something. The other projects that we know are coming aren't to the point yet that we have something that we can sign that appropriates those funds. So, um, this is just one proposal of a, a project that we can spend those funds on that, uh, we can accomplish by the end of the year. I will do whatever the council directs me to do, but I need that authorization to be able to commit these funds to something.
I come back to how we started this. It was Nevada and Jeff's recommendation to do this. And Frank weighed in about the Iowa League and municipalities. I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking that we need to put our best foot forward and we need to spend the money to do this. I mean, they've done the research, we've heard from citizens, we all have issues with our website. We're getting a gift of twenty-two thousand dollars to jumpstart this project. I think we just need to do it.
Ryan, I'm hearing a consensus here. So you kind of said your piece there, is, is that a motion?
That's my motion.
That's a motion, alright. Do I hear a second to, to Ryan's motion to give Nevada approval to spend the twenty-two thousand dollars and forty-eight cents towards de novo marketing for the website?
There's no limitations there though. It sounds like Councilman Docree proposed limitations, that it had to be that only.
This is Ryan's motion.
My motion did not have limitations on it, meaning I asked Nevada to go to them and have them explain what those additional services offer. If she can negotiate a better price or if there's some things that are found out during those negotiations or talks that is something that we as a city feel that we need and don't want to live without as we make this improvement. So my motion is for that twenty-two thousand and forty-eight cents, uh, that does not include sewer. That's the city non-sewer portion.
But she can go to utility board though, correct? She can go to utility board.
She's going to have to go to the utility board. And, but again, that puts that money towards that on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
With the time crunch, man, I'm okay with that. I would second that motion.
So a motion by Yosee, second by Blackwell to give Nevada approval to spend twenty-two thousand and forty-eight cents towards de novo for the website and she will go to the utility board for their contribution as well?
Just point of clarification, the balance coming out of the sewer department comes from the spot. So are we going to give provision to take money out of that too?
We don't typically approve the sewer contribution for other.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to leave my motion as it stands. And if you need to come up with money for the rest of it, that's, that's on you to do that.
I don't think sewer fund has any line item for review on the website. So where is that going to come from?
We'll look at the sewer funds to see what they've got this year. Their contribution is not, um, going to be as significant. Um, it's just a portion. And if they don't have it in this, this year, with the timeline of this project, um, theirs could be budgeted in the fiscal, uh, year twenty-six to cover that. But, um, I would imagine there's probably extra funding in the sewer fund for this, uh, budgeted year as well to cover what their contribution would be.
There's all kinds of money in the sewer equipment fund, we all know that. But that takes a motion of this body to be used for. So are you going to include that in your motion too?
Do I need to tonight?
Um, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I don't think that there's usually separate, um, motions for the sewer fund or, um, who's contributing what to a project in the past. I don't know how. I don't know how that needs to work.
Don't each department have some admin, like if you go towards this, you're, you're, under you, there's some, under possibly Jeff, there's some. I know there's been something at some point in the history that I've been part of the council, the mayor, that some things were, I guess, challenged. I want to say that, but there was, there was money in admin for certain things and this would surely fall under administration, wouldn't it?
Yes, there's a budget each year for software updates, technology updates, computer maintenance, that managing IT and technical services. So, there is a budgeted amount that's just there for upgrades and things that are, that need to be done. We have a generalized budget amount to cover those expenditures.
So, it sounds like it's possible we would not have to pull it from the sewer. You could negotiate with De Nova, use that twenty-two thousand dollars and forty-eight cents and then find money elsewhere if it's needed, if it.
It would come out of administration general revenue funds.
And or possibly look at the utility board to contribute to.
But is that they vote on that?
Correct.
It is on their agenda for tomorrow, but typically that when a decision is approved by council for something like this, we take it to the utility board for their contribution, them understanding that it's an action that's been approved and then we just let them know what that contribution is and it's got a formula for splitting that up.
And then for final clarification, if funds would exceed what is needed and something is negotiated down and there's something we realize with De Nova's pricing and there's leftover, leftover money with the contribution of the utility and the city, then that money would go towards stormwater study with Shide Hattery. To your discretion that we would agree that you can sign the contract.
It can only be our funds. You can't take utility funds for stormwater management?
No, I'm saying the remaining ARPA money. What's?
Okay.
You're hypothetical, if they came back at thirty-five thousand, now you take thirty-five thousand and split it in two, it's less than twenty-two thousand. So, now we got leftover money. What do we do with it? Shide Hattery.
So, we have a motion and a second.
Phew. That was a long ass motion.
I'm not going to read, I'm not, I'm not going to reread on that.
We'll have it in a minute.
Okay.
We all, we all's got it.
Okay. With that being said, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're supposed to reread that, mayor, before we vote it. But it's almost in here, so we're going to let you off the hook.
I appreciate that, Adrian. I really do.
No problem.
All right. On the number eight, board staff reports. Before I get to administrative here, Ryan, I want to call on you on your town hall meeting, how that went real quick.
It went very well. We had nineteen people that showed up. It was very informal, had a lot of great questions. There were some tough questions a few times too, but I think that as a group, everybody handled the questions very well. One of the things that we brought up was the website and that was spoke about by several people. But all in all, it was, it was laid back. It was nice to sit and talk to people one-on-one. And then even when the meeting got done, we spent probably another fifteen minutes talking to a few individuals one-on-one. And I personally want to thank everybody that was there for it. Aaron, you, you kind of saw that the feeling was good. I mean, I think the, the community liked it. I've gotten, reached out to by a couple of citizens since then thanking us for doing it. It's something that I think as a council, we should look at doing it. Doesn't have to be anybody in particular. You could do it alone, do it in groups, but the feedback that I got was very, very much in favor of it. And it felt good for me because I was more comfortable getting up and speaking than I normally would be here. And I think other people in the community were too.
Went good.
Well, thank, thank you, Scott, too, for being a part of that.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for doing that. You know, I think in the future it'd be nice if just had a meet the council where all council members were invited and maybe have different sections for people to go around, ask different council members, different things.
It's a great idea.
I mean, we'd have to post it as a, just an informational meeting, you know, because there would be a quorum there with no, no action being taken. But I was in Arkansas, so I couldn't attend it. I don't know if any of the other council members attended or not, but I think that might be something, just meet the council, you know, in a room or in a facility like this, you can have five different stations and have people just go around and ask who they want questions.
It's a great idea.
Just make it all inclusive, especially if the city's advertising it. Make sure that every representative has a, at least a chance to be present. Yes.
Well, I understand for town hall purposes, I mean, this is going back as far back as you can, you know, look at America. This is something that by design, it was supposed to be small. It wasn't supposed to be all of us. And that, again, I, what you recommend, I think would be a great idea for us to do it if we did that, you know, once or twice a year. But I also think having a town hall, that's just a smaller circle. And, you know, we kind of ask the questions, do we do this at a setting like we did or do we do it around a roundtable or something too? So, I think there's any kind of variations, but the intent is to make it very informal.
All right. Nevada, I'll call on you.
Thank you, mayor. I do have just a couple of quick announcements. I'll try to get through them quick and I can email them out too, so you have that information. The city staff did do their active intruder, active threat training last Tuesday with Officer Shortman and two of the sheriff's deputies. It was really beneficial. Everybody was really engaged. We really appreciate the Eldridge PD giving us that training, providing that opportunity and the Scott County Sheriff's Office for their time. We had our insurance review with Seth Porter. The review with our current carriers is really positive and the plan is to maintain at status quo with those carriers. We don't have renewals available yet. Seth said, looking at budget, we should look for maybe the standard ten percent increase, that just being due to property coverage and the impacts that that's had. The post-election challenge for the unions was denied by the state. The city attorney is going to continue to explore additional communication with the state and see what comes of that in the next week or two. But based on that, if nothing changes, then we will proceed with negotiations as usual between the city and those bargaining units and they will recertify when that time comes. The Mueller closing is scheduled for Friday at one P M. Terricon is currently finalizing their evaluation to provide that report. The council and board member training with the city attorney is scheduled for Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at four-thirty. The community center is not available for that training, so we would need to look at whether you would prefer to hold that training at city hall or if you would like me to look into the library to reserve a room there. So, I can send that out in email and you can let me know what your thoughts are on that. Just as an update to the council, the utility board did vote to approve a new utility administrative management position, which was offered to Sadie Wagner. She did accept that. So, she is the new utility administrative manager that will work with the superintendent in water and electric. So, the three of them will make up kind of a department head team where they'll each specialize in that operations or administrative role that they're assigned. So, if anybody's interested in that job description, I can send that out just so you know what they voted on. She is going to be in a six-month administrative management training plan that was put together. I can send that out to you as well to review if you're interested in looking through that. The towns and farm trail is open to the public. The signs are installed. The silt fence still needs to be removed, but as soon as that's done, that will be the final payment along with retainage at the closeout of the project. I think that's it.
Jeff, can I call on you for any update?
I don't have any tonight, mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Martha, can I call on you, Eddie?
Um, yes. Training is. Training is going on schedule for Letty and I, so we're doing really well. I think we're achieving a lot of, we're making some good progress.
Thanks, Martha. Thanks, Eddie. Tony, can I call on you for the police department?
You bet. You bet. Starting off, our school resource officer, Garrett Johns, was nominated for the Lancer Pride Award. The award is presented by the school board and is given to district employees or supporters for positively influencing, inspiring and leaving a lasting impression through their work every day and making a difference at the North Scott schools. So, congratulations to school resource officer Garrett Johns on that. The department just completed its annual shop with a cop program yesterday at Walmart in Davenport. It was successful as usual. We look forward to doing it again around this time next year.
How many kids did you do?
I think there was seven. Yeah.
Good deal.
Solid. Seven kids had smiles on their faces and the families were thrilled with the program as usual. As Nevada said, the department assisted in giving city staff training on active shooters in city buildings. Hopefully, that training's never needed, but if it is, they kind of have the heads up on how to respond and how to handle that type of situation. Other than that, that's all I have unless you have any further questions for me on anything.
Well, thank you, Tony. I appreciate that update.
Your honor, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and like a motion for a German.
Do you have a second on that? All right. Motion by Daggory, second by Yosi, good German and Merry Christmas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.